I would like to make a motion that we have Bob DiLorenzo be the Chair.
I'll second that. It's open for discussion, isn't it?
Any discussion?
Any discussion on that?
No.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Bob will be the Chair. Congratulations.
I'd like to make a motion to make Kevin Stroian voice Chair.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Kevin is the Chair.
You got any Secretary in here?
She's coming. She's coming.
There are none.
There are no Traders because they don't have no money.
They don't have no money.
The Secretary.
The Secretary and that's really up to the Supervisors. They provide us with the Secretary but we want to have Sean come in and affirm that.
You read a pop law. No money. Yeah, but it's not quorum. You're doing minutes from the last meeting only me and Patrick were here.
As long as there's a quorum to open the meeting, you don't have to have a majority. You don't have to have a majority of the entire quorum in order to approve something. Because if people have to abstain, they have to abstain.
Alright.
And in this case, people would have to abstain because they weren't at the meeting or weren't on the board in case of that.
Since you can open the meeting if you have the proper quorum. If there's only two people, then it's two. If it's one-on-one, that's going to be a problem if I mention it before you. You're not allowed to.
Not going to be able to approve these minutes.
Why not?
Because there's three of us just like members of the Board.
I understand that. What I'm indicating is as long as the meeting is legally open, as long as a majority of the people eligible to vote, vote for it, you can approve the minutes.
You also, I believe, for reorganization normally establish when your meetings are going to be? Aren't a whole lot of other things for reorganization that was going to be? Fourth Tuesday or last Tuesday every month? And Ellen, if you have any other workshops or whatever, usually put that down.
It was not a government dispatch. That's what we all need to be paid.
And they do that for the Supervisors. Technically, the Planning Commission sets its own schedule but if they advertise it and it's not changing, then that won't be a problem.
We made a motion. Motion for Sean, does he mean to be the Secretary of the Planning Board? Or the Supervisor?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
I second that. I second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do the Secretary.
Bobby DiLorenzo voted Chairman.
And then Kevin Stroian.
We have to also. We have for the reorganization, we have to talk about the meeting dates.
Yes. I want to, I make a motion that we maintain meeting dates on the fourth Tuesday of every month.
I'll second that. Is there a discussion?
No. Aye.
No, I think that, I think that we've always loved it that we would have special meetings if that were necessary.
I want to make that a separate motion because I wanted to get a letter sent to the Supervisors. That we be able to hold special meetings and workshops as needed with.
Well, we can do that as needed but I don't think that a regular workshop is fair to the professionals that have to provide us with information and for everybody to.
That's why I say as needed.
Absorb the information in the meantime so these meetings every two weeks is not productive in my opinion.
Especially when you can't make a decision.
And my, I would like to just add that we should, we should do some simple housekeeping rules. I don't think that we should have a meeting that extends anytime after nine PM. People get too tired and stuff happens and it's not fair to the members of the Board or to the public to extend the meetings beyond that. So I think we should make whoever's in front of us applicants, whoever knows that win, lose, or draw at nine o'clock are going to adjourn. I think that that's, that's something that we should have.
And at some point, we've been pretty much doing that priority anyway.
Right, but I, you know, just for clarification sake, and I think that it should be at the discretion of the Chair if more public participation needs to be done in between items. Instead of just having public participation at one time.
Okay, we're putting this all in one motion or you just want?
I don't know as if that needs to be a motion. I think it just, I'd like it present on the mind of the Board members and the Chair to.
Because that is coming up anyway.
Right, and just when we have an applicant come in to remind them that, you know, nine o'clock, and not to be rude to anybody, but after nine o'clock, everybody gets stupid when it comes to this stuff. We just, you just can only absorb so much, so. So this is for housekeeping. That's my two cents. I don't know how the rest of the Board feels about it.
It's still on the motion for fourth Tuesdays.
Right.
And that's what's advertised in the paper, I believe. It was advertised before Tuesday, correct?
At seven o'clock.
But because there's an option to go ahead and change that, we have to go ahead and vote on it, correct? To make sure that it stays that way?
Well, I think it's only wise to affirm it because it's already advertised by the Supervisors and just affirm it, so.
Where do where you at?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do the Secretary.
Bobby DiLorenzo voted Chairman and Vice Chair. Bobby DiLorenzo voted Chairman. And then Kevin Stroian.
We have to also. We have for the reorganization, we have to talk about the meeting dates.
Yes. I want to, I make a motion that we maintain meeting dates on the fourth Tuesday of every month.
I'll second that. Is there a discussion?
No. Aye.
No, I think that, I think that we've always loved it that we would have special meetings if that were necessary.
I want to make that a separate motion because I wanted to get a letter sent to the Supervisors. That we be able to hold special meetings and workshops as needed with.
Well, we can do that as needed but I don't think that a regular workshop is fair to the professionals that have to provide us with information and for everybody to.
That's why I say as needed.
Absorb the information in the meantime, so these meetings every two weeks is not productive in my opinion.
Especially when you can't make a decision.
And my, I would like to just add that we should, we should do some simple housekeeping rules. I don't think that we should have a meeting that extends anytime after nine PM. People get too tired and stuff happens and it's not fair to the members of the Board or to the public to extend the meetings beyond that. So I think we should make whoever's in front of us applicants, whoever knows that win, lose, or draw at nine o'clock are going to adjourn. I think that that's, that's something that we should have.
And at some point, we've been pretty much doing that priority anyway.
Right, but I, you know, just for clarification sake, and I think that it should be at the discretion of the Chair if more public participation needs to be done in between items. Instead of just having public participation at one time.
Okay, we're putting this all in one motion or you just want?
I don't know as if that needs to be a motion. I think it just, I'd like it present on the mind of the Board members and the Chair to.
Because that is coming up anyway.
Right, and just when we have an applicant come in to remind them that, you know, nine o'clock, and not to be rude to anybody, but after nine o'clock, everybody gets stupid when it comes to this stuff. We just, you just can only absorb so much, so. So this is for housekeeping. That's my two cents. I don't know how the rest of the Board feels about it.
It's still on the motion for fourth Tuesdays.
Right.
And that's what's advertised in the paper, I believe. It was advertised before Tuesday, correct?
At seven o'clock.
But because there's an option to go ahead and change that, we have to go ahead and vote on it, correct? To make sure that it stays that way?
Well, I think it's only wise to affirm it because it's already advertised by the Supervisors and just affirm it, so.
Where do where you at?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So are we?
You can.
Bobby, are you going to do a workshop or?
Only if we need it, yeah.
Yeah, only if the.
Okay, so that's not going to be a motion that it's set in stone that we do?
Not every, not every month because we were falling behind. When people don't show up, we couldn't do anything and.
We weren't able to vote on any.
I'd rather have it so that we know what we're setting up.
Sometimes it's difficult to commit the time to.
If we have a special meeting, it'll be advertised in accordance with the law and everybody will be.
Okay, but I would like Sean to send a letter, a letter to the Representatives and the Supervisors meeting. Send a letter saying that we would like the whole workshop, voting workshops as necessary. With the notice.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
I'll put a dissenting vote on that, just for the record.
Okay, well, the reason being, we were told prior on the workshops, we couldn't make decisions then.
Right, no, you have a majority.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. I'm just explaining. Everything will be open.
Transparency.
Alright. So we're now at the reorganization, right?
Yep.
Alright, this time I'd like to introduce Mr. Teddard Rootic from DCED.
One item, Bob, before you start, is on the agenda, on item number seven.
Yeah.
I would like to add it to that, Route 209 Sewer Project as well.
Well, wouldn't that fall under the Act 537 Plan when we talk about that too?
Well, they're separate items, so just as long as we.
Alright, just add that to the.
I have a question. I spoke to you the minutes, only two of you were.
We did it.
You did it, alright.
As long as we have.
We can open the meeting and the majority of the people who are eligible vote.
Oh, yeah, I didn't actually call for them to vote.
No.
Oh, that, yeah, we still need to vote.
Alright, let's pack up. I've got a review of last month's minutes.
I make a motion that we approve them as they are.
I second that.
Are you in favor?
Any discussion?
I will abstain, I was not.
I also.
Abstain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you think we'll ask questions anywhere along the line or?
That's, that's why we asked for, is there a discussion? The discussion isn't just with us, it's open to the public.
Certain things gets assessed with us first then we.
There you go.
I did have a question.
On the minute?
Yeah. Are the minutes going to be published anywhere on the website or?
Yes, I'm going to publish it tomorrow morning on the website. It will be in the planning book, many minutes. Thank you.
And my apologies, Mr. Rootic, for interrupting.
No problem.
DCED, thanks.
DCED.
This one's. Alright, I'd like to introduce Ted Rootic from DCED.
A Department of Community and Economic Development.
And I had been asking, talking back and forth with him about different things, especially on the comprehensive plan and the approach we should be taking. And he's been kind enough to come out today to give us an idea on the route we would take. And with that, I started working on a public survey. It has to be corrected. We're not doing anything with it tonight. I want everybody to take a look at it. Any questions, write right on it. I know I got some spelling errors.
I do think that prior meetings are the other good.
Well, I.
Somebody came in.
I can't, I did a presentation in the borough. Oh geez, that was.
A while ago.
Last year, early in the springtime, I think it was. Yeah, New Milford Borough.
Everybody's got lines.
Yes.
Okay, there's two more left. Anybody would like to just take a look at them?
Anybody else?
We went back and forth a little bit. Taking what was available to the public on the computer. That's where most of the questions came from and Ted suggested to take a look at Center Cities, which we had some more questions to. Now, just sixteen questions altogether. Most of them are multiple choice, some of the ones that look like they could use extra input or they also have another with a space to write in what you need to write in. Now, they've said right along that everybody's going to get a say in it, but what we'd like to do is if everybody approves of this survey, get it corrected, just spelling. And get it sent out to the people of Milton Township first and then open it up to everybody else on the, it'll go on the Internet so you can just.
You're going to put a deadline for fun?
Yeah, we've got to figure out, that's still something we've got to figure out because this is the first, would be the first step to find out what everybody's thinking and what you want out of your township. And which direction we're going to go in.
And this survey would be limited in particular to members of the township, not to?
No, it's going to be open to everybody. We want township first, township input first, but the people of the township, because that's who we represent. And then it's going to go online for other people to fill out too. Because they may have some good suggestions too. We've got to look at it as an overall.
Would it be wise to put this online ahead of time so people could be looking at it even if they don't respond to it? At least they could know what the questions are and be thinking about it.
Oh, yes, yes.
This is just a draft. Yeah, this is just a draft. I don't have that big a stamp, it's like draft.
Does it pay for number seventeen to be other comments? I mean, you're asking, asking specific questions here, but number seventeen could be additional other comments or additional.
Oh, you mean just add one? I'm like, I didn't remember seventeen was on there.
What do you say, guys?
Other comments are.
Well, that's why I said, just let, we're not going to make a decision on this tonight, so everybody just take it, make your comments on it, write right on it and we'll bring it back and see what everybody's opinion is on it.
Just one question.
Can we?
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Are these to be ranked by the people who, who complete the survey or does it check all that apply that you think are, that will?
You can, you can check off as many as you want. This is what you think you want.
But it's not to say this is the most important thing, this is.
No, 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 they're not in any order.
You could.
But you could add that, but you could add that if more than one rank, rank your.
I think that's.
Well, I could, I could check all my answers that apply.
I think this is a good way to get the temperature of the people that want to be directly involved. One thing that we're going to do is we're going to ask the Supervisors how much involvement they're going to give us with professionals.
Yeah.
And I think for us to be writing, for us to be writing the comprehensive plan, and I know that I'm putting this ahead of time, but if we're going to talk about the survey, that's the precursor to the comprehensive plan. The last Supervisors meeting, contrary to what we had talked before, the Supervisors have agreed to contact the other municipalities and see about their willingness to do.
Yes.
Joint Comprehensive Plan. And that, that would mean that we would be engaging professionals to help us and Mr. Reddick's here and there's some, some other people and who's going to represent the township? And they're going to have their own ideas about this questionnaire and where that should go to.
Right.
So, so I think we have to be real careful to get as much input as we can before we decide what questionnaire for the comprehensive plan we're going to put out, so. I don't know, is it?
It's my understanding, Kevin, that the municipalities are all going to do their own comprehensive plan, but that we will all meet at the end to go on?
Well, that was, that was the way, that was the way it started out when things, but, but it seems after the last Supervisors meeting that this maybe isn't going to be as contentious as everybody thought it was.
Right.
So let's, let's everybody put, let's everybody put a hand out to each other and I think that's like part of the reason why we have the economic development people here tonight is just to encourage some of that. And the honest truth is, if we're fiscally responsible, there's more money out there for us for joint comprehensive plans than there are for. So, so I, I just think that we're going to do this on our own and then try to meet after we're done with them, in my mind, doesn't really make a lot of sense, so.
Now, it should be. Because if we're going to combine them, it should be written at the same time.
More than likely, you're going to end up with opposing, opposing, you know, opinions.
Yeah, and we are, but there's.
And then you have to work, and then after that, you would have to work together to come to a, you know.
Yeah, we have to find middle ground, but we found that, we found that when we wrote the joint comprehensive plan in the past, so.
For what, twelve years ago?
More than that now.
Fifteen years ago.
But this, this would be the first step in seeing what the people actually want.
Yeah, right, and that's the whole point. That's the whole point, so.
Right. I'm curious to hear what Mr. Reddick.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, your survey, well, it depends on what you want to do first. So, I, I think the most, the most helpful thing for you to have in this case is direction. So, before you, you kind of move on anything, from what I understand, Milford Borough is getting close to issuing an RFP on their, their comprehensive plan. But if your municipalities do engage in the joint comprehensive plan process, you stand a very good chance of receiving funding from the state. So in terms of the fiscal argument, yes. If each of you go out of comprehensive plan individually and try to meet in, and try to meet, you know, post completing those documents together and that's, and that's your strategy, then it's very likely you wouldn't receive funding in our municipal assistance program. The program where you would receive planning dollars, there's about five hundred thousand dollars, give or take, like ten percent in that budget every year statewide. So for anyone to receive funding, you know, you need to have a very good, a very good proposal and if you're willing to get together with the other municipalities and they're all willing to participate, you know, I'm more than willing to help you, you know, create that proposal and the groundwork for cooperation amongst the municipalities. If you decide that you want to do this on your own, you know, I think engaging in the planning process as an individual municipality is better than not engaging in the planning process at all, for sure. So, you know, when you decide, you know, what you want to do, I think that's, I think it's, I think it's then a good place to talk about, well, okay, then we can look at the next four steps, which would be, you know, we could start with the survey and it's something that you could have for your consultant to hand to them and say, well, we did this. Incorporate this into our comprehensive plan and, you know, if you can get something, you know, cleaned up and a little bit more hammered out and distributed to your, your community as a whole, as to, you know, what I sent to Bob from the Center Region Cog. You know, I think that's a really good piece to help stretch your consultant dollars because if you can do a survey on your own with the professionals, you know, just in your borough and your Planning Commission, you'll save some, you'll save some dollars on your project that you can use to dedicate the consultant's time to other things. So, you know, it's just kind of, whatever your, whatever your board decides that they want to do, I'm here to help, number one, facilitate and number two, help you best understand the implications of your decision.
Is it the more municipalities involved, the better the chances of funding or is it just that it's more than one?
I would say if you have, one, it's very unlikely. If you have two, you're competitive. If you have more than that, you know, it does, it does help, but, you know, the baseline is two and it makes you so much stronger if you're doing it. Even with just two municipalities, it'll, it'll make your application much, much stronger relative to a single municipality plan. The only one, I think in our last round, the only single municipality that got one was a county seat in our last round and the reason they got it was because they were integrating their, their plan with a lot of the goals and the objectives of the county. So it was a kind of a county municipality partnership, so it wasn't, you know, the cookie cutter to a municipality type project, but there is evidence of that collaboration. The other one, I think it was a zoning ordinance and it was out in Western Pennsylvania and that municipality was in Act forty-seven. And if you're in Act forty-seven, which is a distressed community status under our department, you receive priority for funding opportunities. So their Act forty-seven status helped push them through for, for that, for that funding because there's the distress and the need. And also, you know, when you're, when you're dealing with a consultant, you know, if you, if you did a plan and the other municipality did a plan, just economies of scale, I would, you might pick different consultants. So that would mean you're doubling up on costs for travel, you're doubling up on costs for hotels, you know, you're doubling up on all sorts of other expenses that you can, you can limit at your overhead by doing a joint multi-municipal comprehensive plan. And the planning process too, it's about consensus, so in some places you might say, well, we agree to disagree, that at least, you know, you hashed out those, those conversations with, with each other as neighbors essentially.
Did you say the borough was already pretty involved, you mean, it's about developing a comprehensive plan?
Involved in developing their request for proposals. So when you, when you do these plans, first you kind of have a tentative idea of what you want to do, you have just a little bit of a plan, then you formalize that in a request for proposal, which goes out to consultants to put in bids on and say, you know, here's our, here's our way of making a plan for you.
I, I think the last time that we did this, we, we learned a lot of things. One is that Milford Borough is surrounded by Milford Township. We have a lot of common things that, of interest. We also have some very different needs and wants and we found that we could meet in the middle of the road to a comprehensive plan and, and make provisions for both of us in that while we did that. I think with, with the things that are affecting both our communities now to not think about doing a joint comprehensive plan and talking to, especially Dinkland Township because the, the commercial corridor here is relatively full. The new commercial corridor is going to be Route Six going out of town and, and Dinkland Township is either going to do their own thing or be our partner. And they said if, if we'd like to talk to them, to come to their table. So there's, there's, there is some willingness from, from some of the other communities, so. I don't want the people in this room to think if we do a joint comprehensive plan that we lose our identity because that's not, that's not the, that's not the purpose of it, that's not. It's not for us to mold together, it's to find our common ground and have some good sense about sharing services and sharing development and where things are, so. And I don't mean to step on your presentation.
You're completely correct.
We've had, we've had good experience with that in the past, so I don't really understand the reason that we feel that we're going to have bad experience from it this time.
And just so you know, it wasn't that we were going to have bad experience from it, it's just we got the direction that the comprehensive plan was going to be for us.
There was not a willingness to cooperate. I just don't want to, I don't want to elaborate on that. We need to start from a fresh.
Yes.
We need to start, start anew here.
Rachel already met with them? Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Met with them, yeah.
To Borough.
After, after their meeting?
Rachel, after the, after the last Supervisors meeting, it's my impression that Mrs. Hendricks was going to go out with the olive branch and says, you know, we want to, we want to hook up. Do you want to do that? Is there, I, I don't think that she had any marching orders. I think it was as simple as, let's put it on, let's put it on the table and try to, try to talk, I think.
I just don't know, I'm unaware of what the outcome was.
Well, I don't know if they had enough time to really move it along far, but, but that was the, that was the intent that I got from the meeting when I was at the meeting. Let's have the conversation. Let's, let's have the, let's have the conversation, so.
Okay, so, excuse me, let me just ask a question. So in having that conversation, we've got to figure out which townships and municipalities you want to go and talk to, correct?
The Supervisors already decided.
They already decided who we're going to.
The Supervisors are going to contact all municipalities in the area. To, to feel that all of them are going to join up is not, is not realistic in my opinion.
Correct.
But, but we need to put the offer out there. Maybe somebody will surprise us along the way.
So then we're waiting on the Supervisors to tell us who we can partner up with as far as putting together a comprehensive plan?
I don't think they, I don't think they limited that.
No, I don't think that that's, I, I think we need to continue to have the conversation about a comprehensive plan here. We know that we need to do that. And we have, we have interest and concerns in.
in that why we did that. I think with the things that are affecting both our communities now, to not think about doing a joint comprehensive plan and talking to, especially Dinkland Township, because the commercial corridor here is relatively full. The new commercial corridor is going to be Route 6 going out of town, and Dinkland Township is either going to do their own thing or be our partner. And they said if we'd like to talk to them, to come to their table. So, there's, there is some willingness from some of the other communities, so I don't want the people in this room to think if we do a joint comprehensive plan that we lose our identity, because that's not, that's not the, that's not the purpose of it, that's not, it's not for us to mold together, it's to find our common ground and have some good sense about sharing services and sharing development and where things are, so, and I don't mean to step on your presentation.
You're completely correct.
We've had good experience with that in the past, so I don't really understand the reason that we feel that we're going to have bad experience from it this time.
And just so you know, it wasn't that we were going to have bad experience from it, it's just we got the direction that the comprehensive plan was going to be for us.
There was not a willingness to cooperate, I just don't want to, I don't want to elaborate on that, we need to start from a fresh, we need to start, start anew here.
Rachel already met with them, correct me if I'm wrong, the borough.
After their meeting?
After the, after the last supervisor's meeting, it's my impression that Mrs. Hendricks was going to go out with the olive branch and says, you know, we want to, we want to hook up, do you want to do that, is there, I don't think that she had any marching orders, I think it was as simple as, let's put it on, let's put it on the table and try to try to talk, I think.
I just don't, I'm unaware of what the outcome was.
Well, I don't know if they had enough time to really move it along far, but, but that was the, that was the intent that I got from the meeting when I was at the meeting, let's have the conversation, let's have the, let's have the conversation, so.
Okay, so, excuse me, let me just ask a question. So, in having that conversation, we got to figure out which townships and municipalities you want to go and talk to, correct?
The supervisors already decided.
They already decided who we're going to?
The supervisors are going to contact all municipalities in the area. To feel that all of them are going to join up is not, is not realistic, in my opinion, but, but we need to put the offer out there, maybe somebody will surprise us along the way.
So then we're waiting on the supervisors to tell us who we can partner up with as far as putting together a comprehensive plan?
I don't think they've limited that.
No, I don't think that that's, I, I think we need to continue to have the conversation about a comprehensive plan here, we know that we need to do that, and we have, we have interesting concerns in Milford Township that are ours and ours unique, so, yeah, we need to, we need to continue to have the conversation, but.
Just because we, like you were saying, just because we align with other townships doesn't mean that we don't have slightly different directions, it's a, it's a common ground.
Right, I understand, it's, it's not.
And the process is not going to be quick, even, even the survey alone is going to take some time.
That's right, and we can work on some other concerns of the township in the meantime, and it's not a reason that we can't, that we can't do that. And, and I'm going to stop, the. We have room, we have room for everybody to cooperate here, and it would be a good thing. I also think, and I'm going to say this so that everybody can hear it, I think that it's foolhardy for this group to be writing a comprehensive plan without the advice of a planner and the opinion of whoever our solicitor is after that's been done. We can read it and get our opinions and to do that, but for, for this group to be writing ordinances or comprehensive plans or Act 537 plans or any of that on their own, I personally think is not we being responsible. If we don't have the assistance and the guidance of professionals to do that, I just think that we're, and I'd like to defer to our solicitor about, about that and have his opinion. Mr. Walden is diverse in municipal law, and I don't, am I speaking out of place?
No, no, and I've got most of 40 years of doing municipal law, and I totally agree with you. Well, one thing I've said to other groups, and you certainly don't want to have a lawyer be drafting these things, because quite frankly, for what it costs, it's going to be outrageous, and quite frankly, lawyers are not necessarily, they're not experts on writing comprehensive plans, but if you don't get it right, the assistance is easy to give, it's a good resource. Then you jeopardize the fact that when somebody drafts that plan, possibly for funding or whatever, they're going to say, hmm, it's not, it doesn't have the things we're used to seeing. I mean, a lot of it is, quite honestly, is collected data, but assembling that data and putting it into a comprehensive plan, then you guys have the input on saying what kind of flavoring you need to put in there, what priorities do you have based on surveys or even your own information by the eye of the eye in today's world, and that's why they offer grant money, for the very purpose, because they don't expect laymen to be able to write up these kinds of plans. One thing, they tend to get pretty thick.
Yeah, no, that's, that's spot on, I mean, and our goal too is two, is two things. You know, the only way that a, that a planning commission, Danny Kupko, he's been our, he was our senior planner for about 15 years, he had a long planning career, and in his entire span, he's seen one planning commission in his career write a comprehensive plan, and that planning commission had accountant, a lawyer, and a planner. And so they were, you know, with years of experience in doing the planning. When you're doing, when you're doing the planning document, having, having the guidance of the professional is, is worth a tremendous amount, and I've worked with two municipalities, right, I've worked with two municipalities right now in Columbia County, and they came to me and they had, one of them had never even done a comprehensive plan before, and they said, you know, we know we should be doing this, we want to do it, help, we're all in, we're committed, we want you to guide us through the process, to help us pick a consultant, to help us write the RFP, to, you know, provide insight into what other people are doing, and, you know, as this process now kicks off, you know, I've been there multiple times this year already, and, you know, I'm happy to come, and it's, you know, about the same distance from, from here, from my house is here, so, you know, it's very close to the office, it's, what's about an hour away? Pittston, so I don't mind making a trip up here from Pittston, I don't mind making the trip from Columbia County, you know, from Pittston, to make sure that your process is as smooth as it can be, it works well, you know, your application's good, your proposal's good, and the only thing that I need from you initially to do that is a direction that you so choose to embark on, and also is your time. In terms of costs and anything like that, to have me up here, this is something, this is a service that is paid for with your tax dollars, so it's not going to cost the municipality until you decide to enter into something with a consultant, and you pay the consultant, you know, and not, not me.
And you work along with the consultant?
Yeah, and when the consultant's here, I work with the consultant, sometimes I take on some of the work, you know, for a certain project, right now there's a project in Scranton, and it's a, it's a nine municipality zoning ordinance, so the MPC requirements are very, very strict in terms of dates, I'm making them a big calendar so that they can all visualize what they're doing, you know, I pitch in very, you know, tactically when I can to help you as well, and again, you know, it's just something that I do to help the process go well, doesn't cost.
Is this done during our meetings or these separate workshops?
So, the way that normally it happens is you'll establish a committee to do the comprehensive plan, now, obviously, you'll have planning commission members on it, and your planning commission is going to be involved in the, in the steering committee for the plan and doing multi-municipal, so there will be times where it's going to be in front of your full planning commission, and then there might be some times where you have your steering committee taking care of the plan, and that steering committee is normally split evenly amongst the two municipalities, so say you have, you know, how many members on your planning commission here?
Five.
Five, so you maybe have two people from your planning commission, two citizens, and then the other municipality, you have two people from their planning commission and two citizens on this, on the steering committee, so you wouldn't be in any sort of sunshine act or anything.
So, you agree that a survey is the appropriate way for us to begin?
Well, a survey is the appropriate way that you begin, to begin, depending on the context of what you choose to do. If you choose to do this with another municipality, I would, I would step back from the survey and I would develop a consultant request for proposal and look to see what your budget is and what your priorities are. At that point, then you can maybe say, well, we'll do a survey, or, or we won't do a survey, or we'll do a survey with both municipalities and ask people where they live. It's not, it's not so straightforward until you kind of choose a path. So, if you just say, we're going to do this on our own, and we're going to kind of lay the groundwork of this with a survey, I don't think that's a bad idea either. You can, you can.
So, just to clarify, given the importance of this comprehensive plan, it seems as though there shouldn't be, say, a change in a zoning ordinance that precedes the comprehensive plan being put in place, is that correct?
Right, so your comprehensive plan theoretically is the vehicle that you use to determine, you know, what you want to be over the course of the next 10 years, essentially. So, that's your, that's your planning, and in your planning, it'll give you a list of things that you should do. That list of things you should do ranges from infrastructure projects to land use control, zoning of which is one of them. So, out of this comprehensive plan, one of the recommendations might be, oh, you should do X, Y, and Z with zoning. And I don't, you know, me personally, I don't know your communities enough to say one thing or the other, and I'm totally open about that, because I don't live here and, you know, I don't, I don't come here very often. So, the decisions are yours and the input is yours to make on, you know, what you think this process should be.
I guess what I meant, as a general principle, you wouldn't change a zoning ordinance before you've got a comprehensive plan in place, correct?
Generally speaking, unless it's a, unless it's a bandage that is very, very, very urgent, best practice would be to do the planning, then do the ordinance.
Thank you.
There are things, though, that they press it. Use is not provided for, you can go different routes, so you have to at least take a look at it at the point, you can't hold off on all ordinance changes until after a comprehensive plan, because some of them are necessitated.
Like, isn't the condition, when you grant the conditional use for a particular appeal that comes before, like the gas company down here, isn't that sort of modifying a zoning regulation that applies to a specific case, so you're doing this continuously?
You're talking about, you're talking about two separate things, you're talking about conditional use, but you're actually referring to a zoning hearing, so, but, if I may, Mr. DiLorenzo, we have so much to do tonight, I don't think we should get into it.
Yeah, we can't get into it tonight, we just kind of, tonight, we're just trying to organize the direction we're going to go in, what we're going to work on and what your order. We're going to come back a little later to the order of the three different, or four different projects that are in front of us, but we do have people that have traveled quite a distance to get here and.
I just had a quick, rapid question on the survey issue, I heard what you just said, that may not be the way people, we might want to go initially, but I wonder if you had thought, if you do decide on the plan, how did you hear a timetable for what instance you mailed out, and would you be open to some suggestions for changes in that survey, is there time for that, is there an opportunity? And I asked you that question because it's something I raised earlier, and that is, from my experience with surveys, to have the results most valuable to a consultant in this case, having that kind of a ranking system for each of the questions is much more informational and helpful than simply list all the ones that you think are important.
These simple questions that you're asking is one of the reasons why I want to see professionals engaged, is, you know, this questionnaire and how this is headed is very important, because that's going to give us the temperature and the attitude of where we want to go, but how the questions are formed and that sort of stuff, there again, we're a place where I think we need professional.
I wouldn't call myself professional, I've done a lot of them, but not as a professional.
But there's people that have done this in planning and that.
Sure, okay, thank you, that's good.
And just so you know, what I did draft, we did take, I did take off the internet from what planners had made already, and it's not in its final form, this is just to get an idea on what people think should be added or not added.
Just a very quick thought, and I'm not sure if that can be done, when you do surveys, I mean, I do them on a very small scale, but always the question of how to evaluate them, you will get them back from so many people, and then you have 17 questions to go through, how will you organize it? Has it ever been done or could it be done, as we have general elections in November, to just have some computer set up that use Google, Google Forms as a survey tool, where people that just answer them as they come in here to vote? You would reach a large population of the community, it would be electronically evaluated, and you have the results right away. Is that something that you have experience with, or that it has?
You got to remember, not only are we looking at what answers are done, we're looking at what areas they came from, because rural areas may have different input than what you have on people that, let alone the three lane here.
But it could be part of the survey then, you know, you know, ask one question, where are you located, are you in Milford Borough?
Again, we're going to come back, we're going to come back to this, we just wanted everybody to meet Ted, and Ted's willing to work with us, he's given us some idea on direction to go in.
And I can answer really quick, so.
That would be kind, thank you.
No, no problem, one of the things that is really important when you're doing the survey is who's answering the survey, because if you get a disproportionate amount of people, say, from even a certain, you know, income bracket, maybe your top tier earners are going to want something grossly different than, than the lower tier earners in your municipality, and what you need to do is you need to gather the greatest amount of input and cross section of your community possible. So, you know, I can help with that, I can take you to a certain point with that, but there's ultimately going to be a point where you're going to, if you really want to get into the weeds and you really want to get deep in the survey, you know, you can have a consultant that can do a lot of different workshops and outreach to really, really, really get boots on the ground and make sure that you're reaching the strongest cross section possible. Some, some places, they decide that they don't want to go the intense survey route, and, you know, that, that's their, that's their decision too, and they choose to devote their dollars or something else, so it's, you know, again, it's still totally, you know, it's directional, it's process oriented, and it's, it's still very, very theoretical at this point, you know, and direction type, with more.
Mr. Riz, you, you came to our community a year ago or so for, to give training, and would you be willing to come for a specific meeting just to do that again?
Of course.
And I think that that might be helpful for what we ask, and get an actual training session that's just, and in that case, then I would be for a workshop in between, if that was the only purpose, was to get some, get some straightforward training, so.
Plymouth Borough, I'm working with them in Luzerne County on establishing a planning commission, so they have not had a body like yours in, gee, at least, at least a decade or more, so this, probably next couple of months, I'm going to have a brand new board of five people that, you know, I'm training from the ground up, and the only reason is because they asked, so when you need me, you know, I'm happy to be here as long as my schedule permits.
Thank you.
You want to have Shahanah send a letter to the supervisors so we can set up a workshop just right back with advertising?
I think that we, I think that when we get done with this meeting, we're going to have a letter that's going to be pretty long to the supervisors, and I would like to see a representative from this board, hopefully the chair, to go and explain our position on several points, so I think, I think a letter, but, but let's wait until we get later.
All right, we'll go, we'll go back to this.
Or, or the secretary's going to be writing a bunch of letters.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to make one more, one more point, I'll head out of here.
Okay, just to get the organization together, you know.
Yeah, so, when I've done this process before, if I might suggest a topic for this, because I'm not sure when the next, you know, when we'll talk next, but just to suggest a topic for this, once you figure out your direction for the comprehensive plan process, so let's just say we're going to have Milford Borough in on the comprehensive plan, and that's your only department, just theoretically speaking. What the first workshop should probably be is get everybody together, we'll talk about what's expected from everyone, who's going to be doing what, what the RFP might look like, budget, you know, just, just very, very basic, you know.
We need to advertise the meeting and get supervisors.
Yeah, comprehensive plan 101 stuff.
And, and Borough Council members in the same room.
Yep, yeah, and, and so that would be a very good baseline discussion for everyone where we fully lay everything that we think we might want to do on the table, and we pick a direction going forward, and you keep narrowing that down until you get an RFP, and then the consultant comes and will art the grant application, and then, you know, every step of the way, what I do with people is I tell them, here's what we did today, here's the next two or three steps, and here's your timeline, so I'll make the custom timeline, you know, with the grant deadlines, with, you know, RFP kind of generally, things like that, and make sure everybody's questions are answered and they're going into the process knowing where everyone stands and what everyone's going to be doing.
So, that's a question that I have, is like, we're getting ready to go ahead and put this all together, and I know that we're going to move on to different things here very shortly, but this is just for me, and hopefully will answer a question for anybody else up there. We're going to put this thing together, do we have a, or can we provide like a checklist, and it seems like that's what you were talking about, of everything that we have to go through in order to reach the end?
Yeah.
And then, as we have that checklist, perhaps we can post in the newspaper, whatever, this is what we're doing, this is where we're at, so everybody's on board and everybody knows, or, well, we all know what we're doing and which the next direction is that we have to go with.
And if you want to get really fancy with it, Photoshop, I can make you something that you can even put on.
Oh, man, you're the best.
So, have we, is there a decision in place that the only other municipality would be interested to join you?
No.
So, no decisions to make in that area yet?
No, we're not.
Does that require, or would that be, would it be advisable to talk to the people who live in this township as to who they think we should join for? who live in this township as to who they think we should join for this? Or that you want this to be someone, or who's...
Isn't that part of the letter? For the supervisors?
The tone of this and the money and the way things are going to work out is, is going to be up to the, up to the decision of review of the supervisors. So the next, that's, that's what we were talking about, a letter to the supervisor.
Okay, so that's our next step. So then we should move on. We have to break your motion over there?
No, we're just going to... You can move back to your supervisors, I'll do that then.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Rissick, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone.
Tony, I have a question, because we have two more people to get up here. The conditional use for UGI, plans have been before us before, and it's the same exact plans, and we had made the motion to move it forward to the supervisors for a conditional use hearing, and I believe they did the conditional use application and they backed in. But now we have three people that haven't seen these plans.
Okay. Now, if they haven't had an opportunity to review the plans, then they really can't make a recommendation, vote on a recommendation. Are you saying that the plans didn't change?
No, the plans are the same plans we looked at prior.
Mm-hmm.
Because I have, I had my own copy here. And the, we approved the plans, they had to make some changes, but they came back with the changes, and they got to begin proof through zoning, and they came back with the changes, and we actually made a motion in the meeting to move it forward to the supervisors for a conditional use hearing, that they hadn't applied for a conditional use hearing. So now they applied for the conditional use hearing, and they hear with the application to start the hearing. That has to come before us.
So you reviewed it before they had applied?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because at the beginning...
Did they get formal review, or what?
It was just, well, they came in not knowing they needed the conditional use hearing.
The zoning officers here, I mean, because I'm tempted to say if you're already, I know, if you're already recommended, you may not have to do it again. Sean, if you want.
They originally applied, they applied for a minor impact, but then after they recalculated their lot coverage, they wound up coming over what we allow, over twenty-five percent to forty-five percent, which kicks them into an actual conditional use.
Okay.
So nothing has changed on the print, it's just the calculation for the one acre was extended to the middle of the road, the numbers were off a little, so when they redid it, it came back to forty-five percent.
How it fits into the ordinance, yeah.
Right.
I mean, if you're asking me, you're, I guess there's two things. One, in terms of people who have been reviewing the plans, they can't vote on them, okay?
Right.
To make the recommendation. If you, if you already made a recommendation, and there's not a real reason to change that, the supervisors can rely on that recommendation even though it's void to change.
Okay.
You know, if you made a recommendation two months ago, it doesn't mean it's not valid anymore.
Even though it wasn't, it wasn't advertised conditional use though?
Not when it came before they, they hear planning board.
It was being treated as a, not a, okay.
It wasn't an advertised conditional use.
You weren't recommending a conditional use, you were recommending the smaller...
They were recommending they apply for a conditional use.
Then I guess you're going to have to have everybody review it first, yeah.
Okay. So we're going to have to table it. It wasn't advertised for you tonight.
Has it been advert, has the hearing already been scheduled and advertised yet?
Yes, but it was for the supervisors though.
So you're not meeting again before the, before the hearing? Well...
What, for the eighteenth? Unless we can meet right before that, if they had given them time to review the plans and...
The ideal situation is that it doesn't get advertised, you recommend it, okay? But, but that doesn't mean to say that doesn't occasionally happen, cart before the horse, if you will. But that's typically effective, many municipalities say, don't advertise it until after the recommendations made. That way you know it's already been reviewed and evaluated and ready to be scheduled for a hearing. However, I have been involved in a few situations where the timing didn't work, or there wasn't a planning commission quorum, and people didn't want to wait any longer. They can conduct the hearing, they don't have to vote on it at the hearing. They can conduct the hearing on February eighteenth, you guys can make a recommendation at the end of February, and they can take their action at the beginning of March. The alternative is to say the hearing's going to have to be continued until you guys can vote, or you schedule a special meeting to make your recommendation, which you know is, and you could do that.
And for us to do that, they're going to have to advertise that it's coming to the planning board?
Well, you're not required by state law to advertise that the planning board's going to review a conditional use. There has to be a public hearing, it has to be advertised.
Okay, and that's what I'm asking.
As long as it's done at a regular meeting. Now, if you, you know, and quite frankly, if people are interested in what might be coming in, they come to your meetings. If you're going to have a special meeting, you should indicate why you're having a special meeting. If it's to review that plan, let's just say, we decided to do something on February thirteenth.
And that requires twenty-four hours' notice, right? For a special meeting?
For a special meeting, normally it's one week, but you can, yes, you can, you can, you normally would go three days to be in the middle. Unless it's an emergency, and planning commissions don't deal with emergencies, supervisors do, but planning commissions don't. It should be at least three days notice, ideally a week.
I had to guess for the workshops, though. Was that, that what worked?
We've agreed that they wouldn't be voted out, right?
Yeah, we weren't allowed to vote in workshops.
We're not asking the applicant, how fresh do you are for jobs? That's, that's the, that's the...
You're allowed the money in, whether I agree with you or not.
We've gotten our outside approvals already on the project, and because of the planning commission on, in November, recommending that we move forward with conditional use, and so we came back not knowing that there was going to be new board members. And the zoning officer recommending that we come to this meeting so that we can get to the February meeting for the supervisors.
Well, the most timely recommendation would be for you to have a special meeting to, to consider your recommendation on that. Well, but the, the, the practical question is, what, what were the conditions that were applied? What were the conditions that were recommended? Are we, are we, or are we, are we weighing the weeds, or is this pretty straightforward and simple?
No, because we had recommendations on stockpiling, we had recommendations on hazardous materials. But they had, they had changed all that, and answered all the questions, and put it into perspective, so it actually didn't move forward with any, with any other conditions other than not to be stockpiled out in the, in the lot unless it was being used at times for a project, right? And that's been changed.
Yes, so I was explaining that the only time any materials would be stockpiled on site is for a project that's coming up.
And the equipment was going to be parked in the garage.
And the equipment would be in the garage. So the materials would only be there temporarily, they're not permanent.
So if you had approval, if you had approval in the first meeting in March from the supervisors, would that be the end of the world for you as an applicant?
So long may I live.
That's one month, that's one, it's a personal...
Well, it's only two weeks after the hearing.
Yeah, right.
Because they cannot go voting before the eighteenth.
Right. The second, right, then you meet the first Monday?
Yeah.
Supervisors?
Should be the second of March.
The second of March, that's what I'm saying, four weeks. It's not, that way that you could do it the way you said, let them do their hearing, you can ratify it on the Tuesday or our meeting, and then they can make their action the first meeting. Just for the sake of time here.
How, would the advertising, because you said you already advertised, correct? Would you have to re-advertise again?
I don't know.
Their meeting would be on the twenty-fifth of February. It's a regular scheduled meeting, that's the fourth Tuesday of the month. And what they're saying is that, that they could, you know, take a vote, because even if somehow it's recommended not to, that allows it to still go to the next level.
Right.
And then the supervisors could take into account anything that came up, and they could vote on the, the meeting, which is the following Tuesday, following Monday, which would be March second. So that's only two weeks after the fourteenth, the eighteenth, when you're having your hearing. So really what you'd be waiting is an extra two weeks. If this board wanted to try and make it work to do a, their own review and recommendation before the eighteenth, supervisors could vote on the eighteenth, but they're not required to, since they also, as they have up to forty-five days from the hearing to actually make a, render a decision. So I, I don't think it would inconvenience it too much. I certainly understand, I've been on the other side, believe me, where I'm trying to get as soon as possible that, you know, a commitment, but...
Sean?
Just, I think what, just trying to find out is, since they already advertised what we think, I'm not quite sure if the supervisor should be holding a hearing, and then planning commission may come back on the twenty-fifth, there's a condition that they want added.
Right.
So, since they already advertised, can they just continue it on the eighteenth till the March meeting?
Another thing that they could do, sure.
That way you save the whole process.
Mm-hmm. But they can, oftentimes you'll hold a hearing and don't vote. If it's a complicated project, they oftentimes don't vote.
Right.
And that allows them to even say, by the way, we're going to get additional input, like recommendation and conditions. But yes, they could continue and just do it the night of the second. And once you're, and once you, whoever's there gets told, come back on March second at such and such a time.
Which could happen anyway.
Works for the supervisor.
Sean, which could happen anyway? When was the application made for the conditional use?
We received it last week.
Right, it was advertised before it came here.
They had no idea they were coming in, because they recommended approval, no conditions. But then the whole thing came that it had to be a conditional use. So instead of having the paperwork show that the recommendation for a conditional use that wasn't applied for happened prior to addition, conditional use being applied for, the hearing's not, just sort of being going.
All right, so we have, we don't need an extension since it's only been a week, right?
We already have one.
We already have one.
They gave us an extension.
They gave us an extension, so we'll agree to table it till the next month's meeting?
Do they need, they need to act on the time extension of the thing?
Yeah, yeah, well, you, you gave them, they asked, they requested, yeah, they're requesting an extension, he submitted one for it to March twenty-fourth or something, around there. So they already gave you an extension for that.
That's going to be tabled for next month. That'll give you time to retable that.
Make a motion that this application for UGI be tabled until the next regular meeting of the planning commission, and for any conditional use recommendations to be made at that time.
How seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
No advertising.
No advertising?
Well, you have to talk to the supervisors, these guys are just suggesting that that's the way. You don't have to advertise for March second, because you've already advertised for the February eighteenth. It probably makes the most sense to just leave that there. When the supervisors convene the meeting, they'll let people know that there's going to, it's going to need to be continued. If you announce it at the meeting, you don't have to advertise it, because anybody who was interested in it would be there on the eighteenth. So you don't have to re-advertise in order to make that happen. And you're allowed to do that up to forty-five days from when the hearing was supposed to be first held. So two weeks isn't going to be a problem.
Can you be sure that Mr. Magnol is clear on that?
Yes, I can sort of explain how this played out and what's expected.
Okay, so then everybody can take a copy of the plans and review them. All right, moving on. DEPG, it's an informal presentation. All right, so everybody knows this is an informal presentation.
Not a, not a formal sketch plan presentation.
There's been no application made?
No. It's just that...
Revised.
Previously, when we were talking about this project, it was tied in with the sewer system project, potentially could be going up and down the three night, but then it appeared to be some clear direction that to, to relook at any potential changes as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned, that it would broaden the, the base that would be able to utilize, you know, an option as far as two, two uses on a particular piece of property, and that would be based on what the soils in the site would be able to support as far as wastewater and also stormwater. It used to be a case, if you could flush the toilet, then you could get a project, but now you also have stormwater to take into consideration. And based on the testing that we've done to date, the number of units drops to less than half of what we originally had before, because that's all of the soils, and that again, still has to be tweaked a little bit more, based on the fine tuning in terms of actual potential tenants that we would have up there, and also going through the planning approval process, the five thirty-seven process. But in conjunction with that, is any changes to the ordinance that may or may not be needed as a result of that.
Do we have all the final testing results yet?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I think there's, I think our consultant wanted to do some checking with different types of alternatives that would be available, as far as the pre-treatment process is concerned, because there's enough wastewater that would be generated from this project that before you actually dispose of the wastewater into the ground, it would actually be treated, almost like a sewage treatment plant, before it gets discharged into the ground.
Yeah.
So, but this was just to let you know that we, you know, have started to think about, you know, reducing it to, you know, listening to what the supervisors were saying as far as making sure that it could be handled in the mind of doing everything onsite, as opposed to possibly doing something in the future. But this is, this is not a formal sketch plan presentation. Probably the next thing we would do is to, to submit a formal sketch plan to the township, and then have your zoning officer and the planning commission and supervisors and the community in general weigh in on what your thoughts are, where the problem areas are, and what may have to be done going forward.
I do have a question now. Are you only acquiring that side of the street, or also the other?
There is an option in the sales contract to purchase the other side of the street also. Yeah, yeah, the piece where the actual farm goes.
And how many units on there now?
Right now, it shows fifty.
And how many tents?
Oh, fifteen.
Ten, twelve.
Pardon me?
I gave you the commercial spaces.
Those commercial spaces, there's...
Could you, yeah, could you just point out what each building is?
Sure, okay. Yeah, there's two residential buildings that we're proposing, and twenty-five units in each one. There was a medical office building that we were proposing to hopefully bring some medical facilities back into the, into the township, because I know that's been a problem. And then we were proposing a gas convenience store facility, and then there would be some, this, this building is just a retail, which would be eighty by a hundred and eighty feet, which would allow for three, four, or possibly even five tenants to be able to go in there. And then this would be, is what Jim refers to as a dinner house, but that'd be a restaurant. If I wanted to use an example of a restaurant, that's, I'll say Applebee's. I'm not saying we've talked to them, and that's the one that's coming in here, but that's, that, that type of, of restaurants.
How many floors are most of those proposed?
Pardon me?
The, the buildings, are they multiple floors, or, you know?
Right now, these are proposed as three-story.
Okay, and the front buildings?
The front buildings would be just one-story.
Single level?
Yeah, single level. And the medical office building is, right now, is just proposed as, as just a one-story structure also. Because given it being a medical office building, if you did have two floors, you don't need an elevator for code, but for medical purposes, you obviously have to do that. So I don't know if you guys have any questions, or you want...
I, I have a few, but we could go from here first.
Yeah, I've got a question. It is, on the left-hand side there, is that the onsite sewage?
This area right here?
Yeah.
Yes, this is the, it's, it's labeled as potential sewage disposal.
And what's that, what's the square footage of that?
Well, I understand that this is just the area that's set aside to potentially do that. I mean, that's, that looks like that's, you know, pretty, it looks like it's close to a football size. But if you look at the, the buildings, there are dislocation, and if you go out there and look, I mean, it goes right to the edge of the, the woods line before it goes down off the edge of the...
It's only going to give you the general area, because we don't have to propose much.
Yeah, it's just a general, because this, that also would have any, you know, setbacks around the beds or whatever, and it may not even be beds, it may be drip irrigation system, which is another alternative to be able to, to go to, that, so that that's just a different alternative as far as... Uh, so that that's just a different alternative as far as final disposal is concerned. But this is just a generalized area that any other plan goes on, this is to be held open. So that it's, it's there in order to meet the DEP criteria for disposal.
Which would also consist of a backup area.
Sir, if sewers come at a later date, how would that affect this property? Would you double the fifty units? Or would you not do anything?
If we wanted to do something, we would have to come back into the township with a brand-new application and go through that process all over again.
And at this point, the, the density is likely to go back to an area where you couldn't expand.
Again, if you're, if you, if you, if there's ordinance changes that address the density issue, that could negate the possibility of coming back. And if it doesn't, and a decision is made to come back, again, we'd have to go through this process again.
Good, thank you.
And I don't think you want us back here anymore than we do to come back. Yes, sir?
I have here hundreds of signatures of local residents that are against this sort of, uh, structure. Against this sort of density occurring on the doorstep of a historically significant town.
The new density or the old one?
Against densely built structure on the Santos Farm property. A strip mall on the step of a township, a, a borough that's on the historic registry. That has attracted three American presidents, that is famous for its architecture. It saw the birth of the American town.
You're talking about the borough or the township?
Pardon me?
You're talking about the borough or the township?
You know, you can, you can separate, you can try and separate the two. But Milford Township residents are just as proud of Milford Borough as Milford Borough residents. We don't really, we don't see a huge separation. I myself live in Milford, Milford Township. But that doesn't mean I'm very proud of Milford Borough and very protective of the area around it. Because I, I feel that this detracts from Milford Borough. To put it on the doorstep of Milford Borough detracts from one of the most beautiful cities. A city that is right up there with Charlottesville, Virginia, or Charleston, South Carolina, or Santa Fe, New Mexico, or the Hamptons on Long Island. They're all historically significant.
Are you objecting to the commercial as well as the residential?
Yes, yes, I am. And so are, so are all these signatures.
Just the restaurant, do you have a box and square footage on it?
Uh, it's labeled as eighty by seventy. But again, this is, you know, just, I mean, and obviously as you go through the planning process and depending on how things work out as far as wastewater is concerned, what happens from a zoning standpoint, those are all things that have to go into the business. The key thing was to show that, you know, right up the bat, we've reduced the density by more than fifty percent.
Level?
Correct.
Now, how big is one unit? I, I'm just trying to imagine a living space for like eight units on, on like one floor. Like what dimension are we looking at for the length of that building? Or how big is each unit designed to be? Is it like a four-family unit or is it just for two occupants? Like how many people will be, are, are you projecting to be moving in this?
Current thinking, because this, this question actually came up on another project that I'm working on. The current rule of thumb for a one-bedroom unit is approximately eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred square feet per unit. And then the two-bedroom units adds another couple hundred square feet to.
So how, I'm sorry?
So that's, uh, so when, when you're dealing with apartments, those are the rough numbers that based on the current thinking in terms of how those units are put together. But we've, I mean, this is based on a footprint from another project, but we, again, the size of the, would be based on what the ordinance, because some ordinance define what's the minimum square footage that you can have for the number of bedrooms that you may have. There are many ordinances that do that.
So, do you have a projected number of resi, of people that will be moving in for those?
We haven't, haven't gotten that far yet. The only thing we've done is we're showing that, that, uh, right now, you, you can get a number from DEP and what the average flow, you know, per each residential unit is. And we've done some mass diagramming in terms of how much area we'd need to set aside. Again, there's one work that has to be done to define and, uh, market studies done in order to find what the market is in terms of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or even three-bedroom.
So, sir, you don't have any designated, how many one-bedrooms or two-bedrooms yet?
No.
Now, again, this, this is just an informal presentation of something they're looking at. We don't have it. There's no application has been made, so there's nothing concrete yet.
But can I, I, can I go back since I'm new here, although I've been involved with the process and you still show up? But, um, can we go back? When you first came and you proposed, um, housing on that property, originally I thought it was, um, townhomes. Am I correct? Did you originally have townhomes?
No, I don't think so.
You didn't?
No, I think it, it was always, it was always planned as apartments, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, 'cause that, that...
In the previous plan, I think it was like maybe, I don't know, a hundred and, a hundred and six, a hundred and sixteen was, you know, in that general range.
Have you built townhouses?
Pardon me?
Have you built townhouses? Has your company built townhouses?
No.
Has your company built?
Now, I've personally been involved in projects. I mean, I've been a consulting engineer in Monroe and Pike County since nineteen seventy-five. So have I been involved with projects, you know, that involve, you know, townhouses and condominiums and single-family home sites? Yes, I've done any number of projects that have involved that, so.
Would Mr. DePetrus consider townhomes or condos on that property?
I think he made a commitment that, you know, we're looking at apartments right now, but to, you know, to a certain extent, it will depend on what the, you know, the, the market studies also represent. Because there's, if there's a shortage of apartments in the area and the market studies indicate that that would be a, a more successful project than looking at townhouses, that's...
Because, you know, fortunately, the other Realtor is in the room who, at one point, and I don't know if you were at the meeting, and I'm also in real estate, but she made the point that, and by the way, if, if there was townhomes and condos, you would be providing jobs for us, real estate agents in the area. We don't make any money on apartments, but townhomes and condos, we would be, and there's a lot of agents in the area. But, um, they sell. They sell, they're owner-occupied. Those people come into the community, they volunteer their services, they give money to fundraisers. There's a lot of, they have, um, you know, they have a vested interest in the area. And, and we need that because we're rural and we need the money for fundraising. But apartments is what the glitch on this whole thing is. Is the apartments.
Apartments.
So if we, if you, if Mr. DePetrus could come up with condos or townhomes, then bring it on.
So if I had the exact same layout and if I sold those apartments instead of renting them, you'd be fine with that?
No.
I...
I'm, I'm...
I don't think you could. Well, first of all, I don't think, if you're talking about just apartments, condos, condominiums, correct me, Bonnie, are a little step further up, upgraded than apartments. So you're talking about, you know, a little bit more money, you're talking about a little more square footage, upgraded, so...
The square footage per, per unit, you're right, but other than that, I mean, basically would be the same structure. It's just if you would be...
And I think what Peggy is missing, which she, she knows but didn't mention, when someone's purchasing a property, they take better care of it. They tend to spend more in town. I do a lot of rentals in the area, all over the area, Ding, Mattamore, it's Milford. You get a whole different clientele of people that rent. And it wouldn't be to our advantage to get fifty units of renters in this area versus fifty homeowners. And I would guess, I could be wrong, but I think a developer would pay more money as well selling townhouses versus apartments. But I think, I think it's more important that we focus on the, um, the aesthetics of the area and the fact that the townhomes and the condominiums would be owner-occupied, which is, uh, as I said, they're, they're here in the area. They attend the fundraisers, they volunteer their services, and, and I can go on and on and on. But, um, and, but apartment dwellers don't seem to do that. I, I used to be an apartment dweller. I'm sure many of us were. And you lived there for a while and then you moved on. You know, as far as the stores go, uh, you want a little multi-use, I know Tom is not for this, but, um, you know, if you have a, I think you said that, that one building there for five units, the middle one?
Yeah, that could be, you know, split up so that you could have, uh, you know, this, this could actually, you know...
Another floor with apartments on that floor, so you have apartments over the stores.
I mean, we're looking at another project right now that we're, we're doing exactly that. I mean, it's not only a mixed-use project, it's mixed-use in the same structure.
Milford is a broad, you know, Milford is a perfect example. Retail on across barns and living above. So, I mean, I'm saying that, um, you know, I'm not against, it's not that I wanna see that property just sitting there for years and years. It, that's crazy, but something else other than apartments, and that's all I'm saying.
Give it thought.
Give it thought, yeah.
A lot of people don't think it's crazy. They like it sitting empty and like...
Well, I know, but you have to be realistic. People own property, uh, they're entitled to sell it, they're, people are entitled to buy it and put a project on it. But I think it has to fit in with the general feel of the township. And the township is mostly single-family owned properties.
We're gonna get to go through this whole discussion if application is made.
Okay. I'm finished.
Mr. Upstead?
Yes, sir.
I have, I have some, some pretty basic questions about this and, and, um, DEPG has an option on both pieces of property, so it's very likely that you're gonna be dealing with whole pieces of property.
What probability?
Yes, okay, so it's not fair that we're not discussing the opposite side of the road. For the simple fact that we're putting in, um, you're gonna put in a traffic control if we get the number of trip ends that come out of this. That, um, I understand is gonna be a cooperative effort for the township entrance as well. It's, it's only common sense that the use of that property across the street, Penda, is gonna require coming to that same traffic control.
Correct.
So, so, um, to not have any kind of an indication about what's happening across the street, the kind of development that's going there, whether the buildings are gonna be razed or they're gonna be reused, there's gonna be sentiment in the public about, not, not the little house and the, and the farm, and the barn or the cribs or that, but the, the old farmhouse is one of the oldest houses in, in the county, so...
Well, we ran into that exact same thing on one of our other projects. And while the, while the rest of the farm structures were razed, the, the farmhouse, which date back to the eighteen hundreds, is still there. And we have every intention to maybe move to another spot on the project, but we have every intention of turning that into a farm-to-table restaurant. And utilizing and saving the historical, you know, structures.
The, the amount of trip ends, the stuff that you're gonna do, the, the, we, I, I think in fairness to the, to the township, because of the way the traffic control, the things that are gonna happen there, that discussion would be very helpful to be had because, um, there's a natural tendency to use the old Milford Road, which is probably not gonna be appropriate if you're having that kind of volume and those, so, so some, some of that stuff we, we need to talk about. The, the road that you're proposing is also, I understand, the right-of-way to the county property that's behind you.
That is correct.
And, and, and is that gonna remain to be the same as it is? And is that gonna allow for infrastructure to be put under that road if, if there's things that are done over the hill? And is there gonna be parking or access or whatever? How is that portion of the property gonna be handled, I think is, is a fair question. I'm not asking you to answer that now.
No, 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 and I, and I think the intent of what we would do, once we got into some more detailed engineering work, is that if there's a better way to provide access to the county property, you know, we would do that where it would be available to, you know, to vehicles. Right now, unless you have a, you know, uh, it's, the road is, can be questionable at best at times, but...
Oh, absolutely, and I know, and I know that, and to improvement would be the responsibility of somebody else, but I, I think to, to, because that's the only access to that piece of property, that, that has to be part of the conversation.
The county commissioners have already made it clear that we'd like access, you know, provided based on whatever plan we may do.
Back in.
Yes.
Right, so, um, I think that, um, I think that the townships also should consider, and there's no sense in trying to ignore the elephant in the room. And that's the amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for mixed use. The supervisors have made it pretty clear that we're gonna, that we need to work on that. What, what agreement or how that's gonna all pan out, I don't, I don't really know, but, um, I would think that there need to be a formula to eliminate the steep slopes and the other things in the property before we come to an equation. I mean, is that, that's something that we can agree on.
And we, and, and we're willing to work as little or as much of that process with you. We, we're even willing to provide a first draft of a section of the ordinance that deals with that, that you can rip apart and throw out or, or utilize as much or as little as you want. You know, we're, we're here to, to try and help you go through that process.
The, uh, the infrastructure improvements and, and, back to the traffic control, because that's gonna be a huge part of what this project is gonna be. I'm assuming, are you looking at trip numbers that are gonna give a deceleration lane added to this?
Fully expect that we will end up with deceleration lanes and turning lanes to, to reutilization.
And, and that's gonna be true on both sides of the road?
I would expect that that is the case.
Right, so, so that's, that goes back to where I started. We need to handle that from, from the beginning. You know, I would, so, so I think the conversation about the seven acres across the street. And there is one two-acre parcel that's on the corner of that, there's that, that property was nine acres originally, I believe, the farmhouse property. There's a two-acre piece.
Was that by the apple?
Yeah, where there's a little orchard and a, and a, right? And that has access to the back road. I don't know if there's any, you have no intentions on that piece of property or?
I've not heard any discussions, you know, with respect to that, so.
Right, right, so, um...
I just know that they have an option with the Santos's family.
Right, and they wouldn't with that piece of property, but I don't know whether they've been approached or they have, so that would have a...
Not, not to my knowledge.
Right, and then the, the sewage on, on the other side would be handled the same way? Or would you be, uh, looking to, if you're gonna put a set, a quasi-treatment plan in on this, this side of the road, would you be thinking about transporting that fluid across?
I mean, that is, that obviously is an option that can be evaluated, but also...
Yeah, well, it may make common sense, and that's why I wanted to just put it on the table.
And I agree with that, uh, but that also means that, you know, we would be doing a nice boring underneath the highway in order to, you know, accomplish that. Because given the scope of that piping system, there's no way that the Penda would allow an open cut.
Oh, no, I, I, I know that, but, you know, even, the shovel pipe through, shovel pipes through might be...
Open cuts have to be something a little more substantial than...
Right, but the shovel pipe through might be cheaper than a whole other system, so. So I think that it would behoove everybody, if we had some sense of, of what the intensity... of that development would be.
Makes very good sense, sir, thank you.
I don't, I, I have, um, I have some other comments, but the only one that I think that would be important now, Mr. Humstead, is I would think that with a mixed-use amendment, I think that that should be under the purview of a conditional use. Any mixed-use amendment should include the fact that it will be a conditional use.
What does that mean?
That means that the township, it, it, once, once you settle on the language, that any development that...
Just applies to this specific, listen to this, I'm sorry.
No, no, it would be, but this is the problem, we can't do an amendment that's specific to...
A particular...
A particular, we have to do an amendment that's gonna be applied through the entire township, because then it's only, it's only, and that's why I think adding a conditional use to that, or making it a conditional use, gives the township the opportunity to, um, say, the traffic control lights are to be kept by the developer, and that would be part of a condition, instead of, under normal circumstances, the traffic controls and those things fall to the ownership of the township unless other provisions are made. If you have a conditional use, then you can, you can ask that that's our impact fees that may be appropriate when you have a large development would be able to be applied.
Another example also could be, if we didn't really want to design, you know, a, a road to go down to the county, one of the conditions will be that you'll provide, you know, adequate access for the...
Gives you a chance to evaluate each one on its own.
Yeah, each, each property would be subject to reasonable conditions in order to assist them. As far as the traffic sig...
Even things like bond for future road or some, or details like that could be added in.
The only thing I will say with respect to the traffic signal, in all probability, the permit would be in the name of the township as a Penda requirement, however, most, if not all municipalities enter into an agreement with the developer at that point in time that the cost associated with the maintenance of that falls to the, to the developer, not to the township. So, all of, the permit is in their name, all the costs associated with it fall on the...
That's what happened with the Dollar General.
Yeah.
With the, that's what the Dollar General, the township...
Well, it's more important, we're gonna wind up with a traffic control there of some sort, and that's what the ongoing cost is.
Right.
Traffic lights are huge.
It would be the first time that we've entered into those.
Right, and, and, uh... And sometimes, uh, sometimes, uh, full disclosure is simple, and, and if we get down to these apartments as opposed to, to townhouses and those kind of things, uh, sometimes it's just good for the applicant to say that these are not in our business plan, and this is the way we operate, this is the way we go, so, um, we're...
And I think what I'm saying is that, you know, right now, nothing is off the table. This is our desire to do apartments, but nothing is off the table at this point in time.
Right, right, and I don't, I'm not saying that there is or isn't.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Humstead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I make it, uh, very quick, very quick? The assumption that, that rental units, that the persons who would participate in rental units are a lower caliber person and someone who owns property, I think this is an unfair assumption from the standpoint...
It's a very broad statement.
That this development company is, you've done quite a bit of development over the years, and I don't think they would have any desire to create a product that is not going to support itself in the productive view. You're, you're not looking to bring people in there who are going to not pay their rent type of thing. So, I think, I think part of the planning process would also be to have the type of units that they're convinced through market study would be, uh, a viable product. In other words, it's not gonna be, why would they go something they don't think is gonna be successful?
That's Phyllis.
Yeah.
I saw this saying, are you familiar with Smithville, anybody, Smithville, New Jersey?
New Jersey?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay. Hugianian? Well, down in Smithville, New Jersey, they put in the...
Where is, where is that in Jersey?
Well, I think one thing that, I think one thing that maybe we could do, and, and Mr. DePietras isn't here tonight, but he did, he did offer this at the last supervisors' meeting, was any kind of references or anything that we would be interested in as far as his other properties are concerned. So, so what I would like to see is, is a, a list of properties and their locations and a place where we could go to see those and see what's there and speak to the people, and I don't necessarily mean the new projects, I mean the projects that are, he's been in this for twenty or thirty years, hasn't he?
Uh, yes.
Or longer.
Well done. The, the actual development arm goes back to probably oh, oh six.
Well, and, and some before that, I believe, so, so, you know, let's look at the ones in Westchester County, and let's look at the ones that are, that are not just in Monroe County and our neighbors, let's look at all of them.
But my que, my point to Phyllis was, I saw the big development, what I was selling down in New Jersey, and they put in apartments for rent, not townhouses, condos.
Not ownership, right.
Right, and that area went downhill quickly, and I don't wanna see that happen here in Milford. I'm not, I'm not saying they're...
What, where were these projects in Southern Jersey?
Smithville, New Jersey.
Yeah, I'm not that familiar, right.
Well, it's a very pop, it's a very popular, popular area for people to go, and it went down, downhill, and they had big problems there because they were all rental units.
So, what would Ted suggest that the caliber of the people who were renting in that area?
Ted's tools would take care of the properties as well as homeowners.
Not to cut you off, but I would like to move on, so we get...
I just wanna answer to Phyllis.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you at the next meeting.
Okay.
As far as the amendment to the zoning ordinance, I think we're just gonna table that.
If, if I could have copies of what you've worked on in the last year, I'd like to see that.
We got another.
Huh?
We've got another, 'cause we changed it, we were starting to work on it, but then we never had a quorum.
Okay, okay, so we don't have...
It's background, no history.
We can work on it when you have the blueprint.
Okay, all right.
So, we're starting fresh, but, I mean, if you want the basic, what we were discussing, at least four factors to begin with in the design of it, which would be square footage for septic, square footage for runoff, square footage for recreational area, and just explain that because...
Steep slopes and anything in...
Steep, yeah.
Are, are, are deducted from the formula.
Right, and the, uh, and then parking, we were looking at, uh, they had presented three hundred square foot for parking spot, which is good, because it gives you room to walk around a car and load your car, you know, it's, it's a good amount of space, but two parking spots per unit isn't enough. We're looking at additional parking for visitors, because one of the problems I didn't run into a lot as a zoning officer was people calling me up complaining that somebody's in their parking spot visiting a neighbor, in which...
Just an interjection about, about parking, I mean, you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of shared dwellings too, so...
Right, so, we need, we need additional parking, and, and it's gonna be based off maybe a national average, and then maybe some reserved space in case it has to be enlarged.
So, then where do we get a mixed-use ordinance to start as a baseline?
Well, that's, we didn't even go that far yet.
Okay.
This, this is what we're looking at, and I was gonna put some numbers together. Some of it's easy, some of it you can't do. You can't do the stormwater runoff, 'cause you don't know what the square footage is gonna be until the testing is done, so it's gonna be based on engineering studies, in which our engineer would get to review whatever's presented, so...
But, but we have to, with the amendment, have a, have a baseline figure to, to work from.
Yeah.
Right.
So, what did the, what did the town use, 'cause I haven't been here before, with the nine other mixed uses that are already here? Nichols, thingy's got Downers mixed use, Byron Highes mixed use, Byron Highers mixed use, you have a ton of mixed use here already, we're, we're typically a lot, I mean, I know they're probably all processes.
Well, those mixed uses are just businesses.
Yeah.
No, it's gonna be about, you know, the dwellings with...
Or we discuss them.
Yeah, we, we have, we already discussed this at a public meeting, though, we have mixed uses already.
I just didn't know what we used.
Well, like, Helmers would, not Helmers, bulches, bulches, was, was a pre-existing before zoning. Kenny's building up here, the sp, where the spinning was, he actually has permits for it, so, at the time...
He's over here as well.
Yeah, he's got them, so, and, and at the time, we didn't have a mixed-use ordinance.
Okay, so we just went with the parking requirements that...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the, the mixed use is, is the business and the residential combined is what we're having, an issue getting in the weeds now, though.
Right.
But we do have, we do have some existing ones that are already in here so long that they, under the doctrine of L.A.C.E., they would be allowed to stay, you can't stop them.
Right, so, so what I was saying is, we just need to get to a baseline to where we can start.
Correct, which is one of the reasons, one of the main reasons we discussed opening it up to the whole, the whole business district, was because you can't have it on small pieces of property and have it on big pieces of property.
Well, I think we need to come up with an, with, with an ordinance that applies to the whole town.
That applies to the whole township.
Yeah, I don't think it should be limited to the size of the property. I don't see why somebody that has five acres is penalized, that they can't have that.
Right, well, somebody, even somebody with one acre might have, you know, one or two apartments, I mean, sewage, the square footage is gonna determine what you're gonna have.
Yeah, right, so, so I think we need to, I think we need to, to keep an open mind.
As long as I know we gotta, we're gonna have quarms, we'll pull some, I'll pull some off the, from the other townships and see what they have written, and we can all redo different things and see, see what they have.
Some of the other issues that we've dealt with in some of the other communities, density being one of them, the percent residential versus, you know, the real estate that's set aside for residential versus the entire project, when the residence portion of it can be constructed, can that go first, or does it have to wait till a certain amount of the commercial area is put in first, so you start to...
Generally, the commercial area is deducted for the formula for, for residential, correct?
Sometimes it is, sometimes it's interconnected, it's just that, because the, if, if it's interconnected, it allows for a denser percenting pervious on the commercial area where you try to keep more pervious areas, green areas around the, the residential, the number of units per building, uh, number of stories and the height, uh, how you could...
So, you have height restriction just out of fire protection here.
Right.
But three stories falls within the criteria of the community service, right?
By the time you do three stories, you're, that's your max.
Yeah.
With the fire protection.
Yeah, that's forty, forty-five feet.
Yeah.
I think, and also, and, in all probability, any, you know, depending on what we're doing, you know, from that standpoint, I mean, you may end up with elevators and you've got, you know, sprinkler systems and all that stuff inside the structure too, to, in order to assist, you know, any fire control issues to deal with.
And the, the aesthetics may, may be very important with this type of project.
And...
Which normally is not...
And I will tell you that in the project that we've got down in, in Smithfield Township, there's actually, uh, design standards that were actually put together for, uh, some generalized architectural standards for both the commercial and the residential.
Where in Smithfield is that project located?
Uh, Mr. DePietras.
That's the, uh, the old motor area park, it's right there, the intersection.
Oh, yeah, by the, where you get on the highway.
That's the architecture. So, we're the architecture, uh, that we have.
So, so then we've...
Which is what?
The building right across the street, now they're constructed. We, we have to assume then that our chairman's gonna work on a baseline, something that's needed.
All right, wonderful, that's beautiful. Now, we're on the same page.
If we come in with a sample...
I don't think we're all gonna be on the same page, but I think that we've got a group that'll, that'll try to find a comprehensive.
Yeah, if, if, if we actually come in with a sample, you know, for you, I trust that I won't be thrown out the building if I at least, you know, come in with, you know, a sample that you can, you know, I'm not saying you can't do one, but I'm saying I'm assuming you would not be opposed, you know, if we offered, offered suggestions.
Well, the big thing is, is we like it to fit, you know, we, we like the projects to fit into the area, I mean, there was the...
Well, we have to start with language somewhere.
Just ask, ask to someone to discuss, since we've had, but already added to what we had.
Sure.
Right.
The design standards would, you know, try to incorporate some of the architectural features from the historical structures you've got in the community.
You know, so, so there's, there's, uh, whatever correspondence you'd wanna send, or however we wanna do that, and then, um, you know, we're, we all agreed that, that what we would do would be a public meeting, so...
Any more questions?
Not about this in particular, no.
Okay, the only thing we gotta have is, let's finish up on the comprehensive plan, and the Act 537 plan, emergency management plan, and...
What is Act 537?
That's the sewage plan.
Sewer, three, five...
I had been asked by the county to revise the Act 537 plan, and I didn't fail. One person should do it for a whole township, but then it should become, becomes a planning I do have, I do have the old sewage plan with me from Milford Township, and what we can do is we can eschon and make copies, if you wanna see what the old plan was.
I think it'd be wonderful if we had the old 537 plan and, and could take that home with us.
Yeah.
I, I think that it's, I, I don't know if the public is, is aware of how many tasks we have in front of us. The comprehensive plan sets the tone for the township for the next ten years. It's also a document that developers and other people use when they wanna use land use, or they wanna sue the township, there's, you know, this is their basis for, for the decisions that they make. So, the comprehensive plan is, is not just a, it's a document that's used in a lot of different ways. The, the 537 plan is the sewer plan, and, and that's, that has got attached to the Route 209 sewer project for, for obvious reasons. So, the, the 537 plan and the sewer project, they want to run together because the, how the 537 plan is gonna dictate the importance or unimportance of a central sewer system. So, that's a very important document that I think that we need to be aware of, and when we get to the Route 209 sewer project, um, that's going to dictate, uh, the growth of the township and how we're gonna go, and what extensions are gonna be there, and it's obvious because of the applicants that are, are people that are trying to be applicants here are, are involved, so, um, it, and we're not, this, this body is not getting a regular report on the sewer project, and I would like to ask that the supervisors, and I know you're...
I already asked the supervisors for at least a monthly record.
We should have, we should have the monthly minutes and all of the reports that are coming from, from the engineering firm that's, that's steering this.
And I don't believe, even supervisors, I don't believe.
And I don't, and I haven't heard this discussed at the supervisors' meeting, and to do, if we're gonna be doing a comprehensive plan and we're not getting that information that's under our feet today, it, it doesn't make sense to me. So, so, um, to get back to the chair, the, the chairman going to see the supervisors or to write a letter to them, I, I really wanna see that, how they want us to handle the comprehensive plan, are they gonna give us the professionals that we need to, to do the comprehensive plan, the 537, the planner can help us with the 537 plan as well, is that gonna fit into what's going on with this, with the Route 209 sewer project? And are we gonna be informed? Every month, we should have a packet here that's got the last month's sewer minutes, the engineers' report.
We should have a full report of the meeting.
We, we should be knowing what's going on with this if we're wanting to be planning for...
Wasn't Penny attending those meetings?
Yes.
Phyllis, Phyllis, in all due respect, to, to attend the meetings and then not to give this board what's going on with that, to tell us... Phyllis, Phyllis, in all due respect, to, to attend the meetings and then not to give this board what's going on with that, to tell us, to tell us when it's done,
I hear you.
is not.
And let's just say, I mean, everybody's aware at the last meeting, I didn't make a statement, I'm the sewage officer for Milford Borough and Milford Township and I wasn't even notified about the DEP meeting with, with anybody that had a meeting about the sewer.
Right, so there's, there's things that are going on with the sewer project and, and, and I don't, and it's not whether you're for or against it, but we need to know what's going on if we're doing the planning. That just doesn't, it, 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 it escapes my thinking that we're not being, and, and I don't hear it being discussed at the supervisors' meetings. And I don't think.
They are, they're just unaware.
Just so you know, the board representative from the township does receive both minutes and the engineering report each month. Right. By email.
Right, but you know what?
Asked along is another matter.
I don't think, I don't think it was being asked for at the supervisors' level, but now it should be asked for so they can have it and we can have it.
It's easy to produce it and quite frankly, Michael Marzinski distributes the minutes and all. And there's no reason why he's trying to hide anything, so if you just ask him to send it to the township directly, the secretary, it'll get there. Right, and I think that it's, I think it's that simple. It hasn't been asked for, it's not being put there. I agree, you should. I'm asking for it, we're, I, this, it's important that this board have that.
Yes, it is.
And, and the, the intermunicipal agreement mentions the 537 Plan. So if we don't engage ourselves in, in how that's written, the county's gonna write it for us.
I think I uploaded one of the sewage meetings last month. It's in the website.
Right, right, but I.
That's been going on since last year in November.
But I'd like to see, I'd like to see the sewage reports printed, the, the meetings, the, the reports from the engineer. I wanna see, I'd like to see them printed so that we have them in a meeting and on the table for anybody in the public that wants that.
So that we should put them right on the, the agenda for the meeting?
Yeah, but.
District view should have been.
Yes, yes.
So that's what, what I'm saying is that's something that I'd like to have requested the supervisors, that it's clear that we get that, that we get that information.
I think the township in itself should be getting there.
I read the intermunicipal agreement and it includes the 537 Plan and we're not getting any of the information that's going into that.
This is.
It's gonna be written for us.
This is our actual 537 Plan. This was revised in 1978.
Sure, it's current.
And that's the most current one we had.
And who asked you, who asked us to review it?
I was asked by, by the county to, to make some upgrades to it, yeah. And because I'm the sewage officer.
The 537 Plan is like the comprehensive plan for sewage.
Right.
It tells us where we're gonna go. And that's why the, the 537 Plan is so important to their sewer project. If the 537 Plan is not worded properly, then it doesn't get the sewer project.
It is.
So we, we have to be clear about what information.
We'll get copies of this sent to everybody. And this one is from, this is the Act 537 Plan, Pennsylvania Sewerage Facility Act from the state. And it gives you the responsibilities of what we should have in the plan.
Wonderful.
Okay. So we'll get copies of both of these and get them off to everybody.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
And if every municipality was following DEP's regulations, that, that plan is updated every five years, so you know they're not doing a really good job.
The sewer plan?
No.
No.
Well, and they won't allow.
I thought it was handed to me, nobody even knew we had one.
DEP is not allowing new modern alternatives to sewage treatment that are available to us on lot that, that just because they don't wanna approve them. I mean, there's, there's some of the, some of the thinking with DEP just. Chris, Doc, when they said every five years, they also were providing funding.
That's correct.
But now I'm seeing.
All right.
I have an air quality permit, but.
Further discussion now, the Emergency Management Plan. Before we get back into the deal. This is a basic idea what the, from the state and what the, what the townships are responsible for, add on the MVC. And I made up a list here. And this has to go before the township to see how involved we actually wanna get because you could act, being we have a generator here, we can be a,
What?
Shelter.
Shelter.
A shelter, that's the word I'm looking for. We can be a shelter. I probably wrote it in here and I should read it. But what we're gonna, how we're gonna designate it as an Emergency Management Operations Center, a list of possible hazards that could happen.
Is this like natural?
Public, yeah. Well, it's natural and, and man-made. Public awareness of, of what we are gonna be doing or what we can handle. Aid agreements with the county and adjacent municipalities, utilizing the National Incident Management System and coordination with the lo, with local county, state and federal agencies for emergencies. That's, that's our, would be like our goals. And then as far as a checklist, you know, do we wanna get into having a well-stocked first aid kit and supplies here? In case there is an awful lot. I mean, the, the Milford Fire Department does handle a lot of it, but how much can they handle? Do we need to keep something here? These are things we have to look at.
Well, there's, there's, we have, we have resources available through us, to us through Homeland Security, the, the local task forces have trailers that are available to us for, for mass casualty events.
Right.
All, all types, all types of different events, so, so some of this stuff is, is available.
And that's where I'm saying the coordination with local state and federal, you know, we need, we need a list of, of what's available, where, when, we can get it, how long it would take. You know, even something as basic as fire extinguisher locations and use instructions.
I think the Red Cross gives a seminar on shelter procedures and different rules and regs that are needed.
And then we should post phone numbers for contacts for, you know, utility emergencies.
It's a big job.
It's, it's a huge job.
And there's, there's a lot to it, but you know, again, how, how much, how involved can we get? I don't, then the other thing is necessities. I need, need a list of all the equipment available to us that the township owns. This way.
Do we own things?
Yeah. This way we can go on, you know, go along and with the agreements with the, with the county and the other municipalities, that would be aid that they could draw from us. Which in return, we should have lists of what they have, so we can draw from them.
Well, and one thing that, and, and I know this from, from my involvement in state associations and if you were to have a catastrophic event or if you were to have a mass fatality or if you were to have that kind of an incident, it could be as simple as a plane come down. If you bring in all the resources and you, meaning the township and the municipality where it occurs is responsible. If you don't contact FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management,
Right.
and, and PEMA, Pennsylvania Emergency Management. And if you don't follow the proper protocol to bring the, the right rescue and clean up people in, your municipality will be responsible for the cost of that. And those costs can be huge. Huge, so, and that's just a matter of the protocol. When you have a command incident, you say, we have to call these people and do it. And if you did it, then the people you bring in are.
Let's. And our region.
And they hooked our region up with, with Metropolitan New York.
Right.
So, so they put Little Pike County in with New York City and Northern New Jersey.
I mean, we have pipelines running all over the place, right?
Something I started to work on years ago was escape routes, but, but, you know, anything along electric lines and the pipe, plus gas pipelines. And it got dropped. You know, especially when the compressor station went in. We were looking at escape routes for everybody up above the compressor station. And at the time, they were looking at Malibu for the escape route, but then you're sending them right over the same gas line that runs past the compressor station.
Right over top.
So I mean, it's, you know, I tried to, everything I've tried to do so far, we've gotten nowhere.
So I figured it's time we take a look at it.
Again, we gotta pick our pecking order here. But something we need, something we do need to look at and, and see where we wanna stand with it. I mean, as far as us being a shelter, a lot of it's gonna depend on the building capacity for people and the septic.
And the septic. And the septic.
I, I think if you went to, I think if you went to the county emergency management, there's boilerplate in how to make the proper request and at least get that stuff in yourself. And, and get, get at least that portion of it adopted so that if something does happen, I could say.
Yeah, 'cause when I started working on this, I was working with Tim then.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's it, pretty much for that, but it's just to make everybody aware that we, we do have to come up with something.
Now, is that part of the comprehensive plan or it's a separate?
No, it's separate.
Separate thing.
That's why the plans are all set aside separately. Wanna handle that? Yeah, any, any help you can give me, I appreciate. And, you know, one of the reasons I am the Emergency Management Coordinator is because I know anyone with all the qualifications.
You've got the qualifications, that's correct.
Oh, you know what to do, hey!
Right, but you know, there are people, there are people that live and breathe out.
That's right.
To help you.
That's, and that's what I need. I need the people that live and breathe to, to give me a hand with it. All right, it's nine o'clock, but just quickly before we adjourn, the comprehensive plan on their budget, I just had it here somewhere and I can't find it. There was $5,000 put aside for planning necessities. And we were given, you know where it is?
Yes, for the minutes.
That's where.
This one is the current one?
I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put in my, my two cents here. I haven't had trouble doing that so far tonight, so I'll do it again.
All right, that's the one.
I don't, I, I, I think that's, I, I think that the township has to realize that this is, this is not something that's gonna be a simply, simple budget item.
No, it's not.
No. And I think it has to be, I think it has to be rethought. And if we can do a, you know, if, if we can do a comprehensive plan on a joint plan with a neighbor and community and almost pay nothing for it.
It would pay.
And we're gonna pay $40,000 to do our own.
Well, I don't know. My point being, in here somewhere, there was $5,000 aside. And then we were given $2,500 to put towards it from the supervisors' last year, which I don't know even if it carried over.
It was supposed to.
Did I?
Yeah.
And, and the township has, has some serious fiscal issues.
Issues right now, right.
Because, because there's been some overspending for more than, more than one year. So, so there's, and I know they have.
Which is one of the reasons I brought, you know, I would, I brought it to everybody's attention that, that Ted should be involved in this because he can give us some extra help in it that would take the cost off of.
I think a training session from him just to get everybody on the same page really.
Well, that'd be great. That'd be great.
Would that be available to the public or only to you?
No, that would be available.
Absolutely.
Everybody. The last one he did was open to everybody.
And there was a lot of fear that was put in that you couldn't because of quhorms and sunshine law. If you do everything in front of the public and, and you don't make a decision, a training session can't be considered a violation.
You can have everybody you want, as long as you're not voting on stuff.
You're not making decisions.
Or making decisions to vote on stuff.
You can have everybody in a room you want.
Absolutely.
So basically what I'm saying is we don't have enough money for a plan. So, and it's something I'm gonna bring up with the supervisors at the next meeting.
We need our marching orders and we need to know what they're willing to do.
Right, and that's the bottom line.
Then we know what we have to work.
We can't do this stuff with nothing.
Has Shepstone been, is Shepstone, is that me? Yeah, has he been used by the township for advice on?
Quite frankly, Mr. Shepstone has had an association with, with some of the people that have been coming before the township and he's chosen not to be part of some of this for, for, because he's a, Tom is a pretty decent full disclosure guy and he didn't wanna get into it because he's represented your firm before, so, so there's, and we may wanna, and we may wanna engage him or whatever when we know that that's the case, but, but the honest truth, that's been part of the issue. So he's, so, Mr. Shepstone, I've known for a long time and, and we agree on some stuff, we disagree on a lot of others. But the one thing I like about Tom is if he stands for something, he stands up in a room and says, this is where I'm at.
You know exactly where, what he's standing.
He's, he never, he never plays both sides in the court. He's always been real, real upfront about that.
Are you going to give us a copy of that Management Plan, Emergency Management?
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll have copies made of everything. I'll, I'll stop down here tomorrow. I'll get copies made up and when they're done, Sean, I can notify everybody to pick them up.
Okay.
Or I can scan and.
Okay, you can do that. I'll stop in tomorrow with all the. Get that people to know what you did. I think that's basically it. Anything else that I, anybody thinks I should bring up at the supervising meeting?
All the members and the folks who are going to take a copy out of the.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, so it's the.
They show on the app, the application for the conditional use. I asked you already, doesn't it? It's a long order.
And the supervisors are saying that we, they want us to file a statement of financial interest with planning commissioners.
Who'd you got in common?
That has to be done.
That has to be done.
March 1, I believe. Is that right?
No, that's the one I looked up.
But it's a, it's a later, but you have to make first.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, accept. I got it.
Don't worry, don't worry.
Go ahead.
I'll meet tomorrow.
I'll take it.
On your favor.
Aye.
Aye.